...legal data instead of illegal stories that are going to have to be told here today. Three years of us fighting this on the ground legally. Fortunately, some of the people who are about to testify have done it despite the fact that it's not actually legal under the law. And it's really unfortunate that we haven't found the salve that we need in this legislature. But many of us are here today to say that it is inappropriate to put more DEA officers onto the streets, especially if the Attorney General intends to make small possession of heroin a felony. That's only going to create a much greater economic liability for the taxpayer in this state, which I doubt the federal government will pay for. We need a compassionate, rational, and main way to deal with this scourge. And the truth, totally honest, God's honest truth, is that we can grow medical marijuana in this state people's backyards, and they can refine that in their homes down to a substance which when they smoke it, it will neutralize their cravings, and they will not feel that need right then. And so, it's really, really great that we spent $15 million federal money on the methadone clinics in this state. $6 million for the don and the delivery of the don, and another $9 million on the delivery of the people who need that don to the clinics to get it. But the problem is, that's federal money. This is $5 million we're talking about. It's main money. And it's inappropriate that once again, we find ourselves in the medical marijuana community, where they advocate for tens of thousands of people under this pressure. And it's unfortunate. I wish that we could have gotten it through that committee three years ago. I wish we didn't face the lobbyists from the big pharmaceutical industries that we do. Because it's about the money that those people make off of the suffering of our citizens. That's why this has happened for decades. It's why methadone was ever introduced. Because the simple truth of the matter is, is that we could be making this in our homes and in our backyards and neutralizing this need. One of the biggest problems we have is that the crisis we're dealing with is not being dealt with effectively. It's not working. Whatever leaves this society and chosen to do is not working. It isn't. And one of the reasons why many of us are concerned about just giving the DEA ten more officers is that they, at least some of the members of their own community, have had real problems with synthetic and pharmaceutical drug abuse themselves. And if you don't believe me, investigate any of the cases in Knox County. It was a real big one. The guy that raided me five years ago, I mean, it was right there in his records. I was up on charges. I saw him personally in three months, in the summer of 2008. A Knox County deputy alimony with the DEA took possession of seven, I'm sorry, 2,700 amputations in three months. It's an average of 28.6 a day. It was in there. They were concerned it might have been diversion issues. But the point is, is the citizens have lost faith in this system. And part of the reason is because the system is not listening to the citizens. We're here, we heard Senator President Tebado say that they were all ears. And so, there are going to be a few more folks who are going to talk to you about this. We need to be able to treat opiates with medical marijuana before we have more of the same treatment that these people have been experiencing for decades in this state. We need to take this issue by the horns and get it under control in our state. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Did a good job introducing the others. Questions?
Sure.
Thank you. Glenn Martin?
Big work for somebody who doesn't go in. Last time I was standing here, I threatened to flip the table, but I really wasn't going to do that. It was a joke. Thank you guys for giving me this opportunity to come and present this. And I am ecstatic to see such interest in this because I am 37 years old, and Montego Maine, been there my whole life. I have seen this thing from top to bottom, inside out, lost friends, a little bit. So, please bear with me my grammar and my testimony. A legal addiction breeds and seeds the lying and stealing. A child lies when he's afraid to get in trouble. Opiates are sedatives, and very few trades and occupations can thrive while its participants are sedated by its commission. Cheap access to pills accompanied by high debt and lack of skilled workers naturally ignites supply and demand. Our pills are going south. The dollars are coming north. We must defund those buying heroin. Heroin will not go anywhere without dollars to move it. Those who get caught up in the addiction along the way eventually have to make moral and/or financial decisions to avoid withdrawal symptoms. Folks are selling their pills to fund many expenses and habits including rent, insurance, property taxes, lottery tickets, alcohol, cigarettes, cell phones, marijuana, and heroin. Communities and private industries are as addicted to the pill trade as the addicts Funding treatment centers with limited rates of success to buy pharmaceuticals away at exorbitant prices is supporting the same lobby that is passing the pills out like candy from the all-too-popular corner drugstore. Methadone and suboxone treatment has no exit strategy. As treatment specialists sell into our communities with mortgages, car loans, and student debt, who is the addict now? Nothing makes a hog's nose hornier than a trough. Marijuana is the only substance that we produce here that is successfully treating addiction. Because opiate addiction is not listed as a qualified condition for this marijuana use, those who are empowering addicts with the ability to treat themselves are doing so illegally. Marijuana farmers have successfully assisted in this effective treatment for decades and will continue their efforts regardless of current law. Eventually, after hundreds of millions of dollars are spent investing in this addiction, it will come down to the most practical solution, and even the government will get on the bus. We can't spend our way out of this. If you give an opiate addict who's going to heroin money, they're going to buy heroin first and last. Here, Maine, this is a shop. Maybe, just maybe, it'll hit the open ears claimed by party leadership and curb the public addiction before we waste any more Maine money. Our drug enforcement agencies do not have clear rules to follow when dealing with the medical marijuana program. Likewise, Mainers participating in the legal medical marijuana program are being raided and charged in the gray area. Petitions to clarify our rules have been circulated, signed, with an hearing's help no avail. Multiple lawsuits are currently on the way to trial because legal farmers and users refuse to plead death. Our drug enforcement agency and their officers are losing moral credit, and public support faster than the state can hire them. Funding the addition of more drug enforcement agents prior to clarifying the law that they're going to be trained to enforce is not morally or fiscally responsible.
Dennis, excuse me, would you be willing to summarize the rest of your testimony? I've given you extra time, but...
Aye, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. But if you could summarize the rest, that would be great for us. Thank you.
The fact that you have it, you're going to read it, pay attention to it, listen to these guys that are coming up behind me, is good enough for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We very much appreciate you being here today. Thank you. Jenna?
Mainor.
Right?
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. I tried to go on to the A-skill use term, so I figured I'd make sure it was actually Mainor.
Yes. Welcome.
Maybe it's not mine.
I apologize. I was not in the room when the Senate chair was calling my name, so I was not in the room. I apologize. So Dennis is next. Dennis is here. In my apologies to GW for calling you down.
Thank you, thank you, Senator. I'm in Imola, Maine. We have a pretty bad heroin problem out there as well. On this past summer, we lost four people in Imola, eighteen year old kid. Every day, I put my five-year-old son in the bus to watch little five-year-olds across the street. Hasn't been mothered, and died last year. I'm a single father, raising my five-year-old because of his mind decided to get pills and the first was more important than being a mom. I'm a recovered addict, about a dozen days ago, ten years. My goal here in Maine is to start a drug treatment center, cannabis center, with a park space out there towards Imola, where Ben and Wanda can come for six months at a time. The place that everybody keeps talking about, there's no place to bring them, there's no place to bring them. Put them in jail by mail. You're going to meet more drug dealers, you're going to meet other drug addicts who have no desire of equipment. They're in jail, they're going to sit there and talk about better ways to get high, more ways to get drugs across the board. I hear that there's only 16 beds in the state through detoxes, for instance. And, you know, where you spend all this money on putting them in jail, getting more, you know, beating all the traffic, that's great. I'm all for that. I'm all for busting the people that are bringing their crap into this state. What are we doing to give them things and keep them? Because last year, I got 11 pieces of people out of methadone heroin with cannabis. Part of the farm idea is that when people are coming out there with cannabis that I grow, 40% of it gets made into medicine to help cancer patients. The farm is going to be 100% of the medicine that's grown there is going to be made into medicine to help cancer patients. Because it not only gives one of two things, the addicts that have been screwed up for so long, that have had the whole world down on them because of their addiction, finally feel good about themselves because what they're doing is going to be helping another person. And that therapeutic value, why haven't you helped another person out there? You know, I started using drugs, heroin, at 11 years old on the streets of upstate New York with my father, because he thought it was cool to teach me how to shoot dope. And I did, so I was 31 years old. Twenty years of being a drug addict. And when I got out of prison in 2006, after getting, I got to tell you, when I was in prison, it's going to be the same when I got out. Everybody was waiting for my dead dog to try to get me high. So I went out to the woods, took some seeds, and I grew some plants, and I smoked a lot of pot. And it kept me from using it. Because I didn't have to go to a drug dealer to get my medicine, because I had it. When I got a desire to get high, I smoked, or I ate a cookie. You know, people are dying left and right here in Maine. My ex-wife has overdosed five times this year. My five-year-old on Christmas, when he heard me talk about my mom, he said, "Where's my mom at? What's wrong with me?" And it's sad to say that, I couldn't, what am I going to tell him? "You're five years old, your mom's an addict?" No, I can't talk to him. I let him get over, and if she's still around, then he can talk to me. You know, there's a lot of parents out there that need, you know how many people come to me and say, "Can you help out, do you have any bed space yet?" And I don't, but I'm trying. You know, the fact of the matter is, people are out there every day coming to me, and I have nothing to tell them. I have nothing to tell them. There's always a lot of funds to put more officers on the street. Thank God for our officers on the street, you know? Thank God the officer arrested me was compassionate enough to say, "Hey, you know, what do you need help with? I can see her strung out drug addict." And my drug choice was more, more whatever you had. It didn't matter what it was. And alcohol started it off. Everybody called pot a gateway drug. That's a bunch of charge, incident drug. Alcohol's a gateway drug. I never, I never got stoned until I went and go shoot some dope. But when alcohol was involved, as soon as I got a little bit of drinking, I was off some reasons. You know, whatever we can do about it, align some money to help out. I mean, you said yourself, there's only 16 beds in the whole state. Why is there only 16 beds in the whole state? Everybody's talking about more money for this, more money for that. How about putting some more money up with some mutual reactions? To get people clean for something that works.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you very much for being here. Jenna Mallett.
Welcome. Thank you. So, my name is Jenna Maiter. I'm the Executive Director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the Maine State Chapter. Oh, and she's gone, the person who wanted data. We will bring to the little session information about mental illness and co-occurring substance use disorders. Substance use disorders is a mental illness in the DSM. Before this role, I was Executive Director of the New England Institute of Addiction Studies. So, my position statement is largely related to the criminal justice side. There's just a tiny bit that connects to the funding for the recovery centers. I'm obviously not going to read it for you, but just to point out, obviously, NAMI Maine supports additional access to outpatient and inpatient residential meds and recovery centers and the additional enforcement officers. Many of you know, we work very closely with law enforcement across the state. I was really proud both when Sheriff Morton and when Chisachek spoke about how non-stigmatizing their language are. People aren't addicts, they have a substance use disorder. We don't label someone, that's a diabetes, that's a cancer. We shouldn't do that with mental illness either. So, I was really proud to hear the non-stigmatizing language used by some of our law enforcement leaders. I want to point out a few concerns we have, not just concerns as much as suggestions. And you'll see the last paragraph talks about LD 1488, which is a Representative Dion's bill, which would put more money, $50,000, will do nothing for law enforcement to have low-level job diversion. It's, that's ridiculous. Representative Dion's bill cost for $2 million. I realize that's maybe too much, but we work very closely with the Sheriff's Association, very aware of the overcrowding in our jails, very aware of the fact that folks who have low-level drug crime arrests need treatment, and treatment sooner rather than treatment later will produce better outcomes. So, the sooner we can intervene in someone's life, the better. First arrest, ideal, even before first arrest, obviously, the better. But so, we would strongly advocate that you look at that $50,000 and be more realistic about what will actually make an impact, as Mark did in LD 1488. We also would just say, as we will say with everything that comes to mental health, that let's use an evidence-based model. There are national registry and evidence-based practices and programs as maintained by the federal SAMSA. List programs that work and standards that need to be met. We have significant concern, money is always part of the solution when it comes to mental illness, especially with the lack of access in this state and the number of people who are uninsured when it comes to mental health coverage. But just doing something isn't as important as doing something that research shows works. Everybody thinks they've got the newest brilliant idea, and that's nice, but why are we wasting money to determine if something's effective when we know things that do work? So, when we talk about the money of the ESAP, our concern would be that there would be evidence-based requirements on those funds. We think funding is important, but funding with clear guidelines around meeting evidence-based standards is equally important. So, and obviously, we support the detox center, which is the point that I will end on. I'm going to, you know, NAMI Maine works with lots of families and lots of individuals. So, Mary and Jimmy, Mary passed away at 72 after a lifelong struggle with alcoholism because her doctor, her Percocet wasn't working for her lower back pain anymore, so he prescribed Oxy. The day after he prescribed Oxy, unaware of her substance use disorder, she passed away from an overdose of taking Oxy to treat her back pain with no intent to do so. Her husband now, it's been about, about a year and a half, he continues to attempt to drink himself to death because he too, as a Scottish immigrant, has been a lifelong alcoholic. There is no detox center in Bangor where he lives, so he continues to go to St. Joe's, who sober him up, arrives in an ambulance, sobered up, sent back home to do the same thing over and over again. So, I realize that we talk a lot about addiction when we talk about young people, but as our outstanding veteran pointed out, we can't forget about all people and our scene of struggle in substance use disorders as well. And a detox center is greatly needed. And just our questions, we could...
Yeah, thank you very much. Questions? Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Kevin, it looks like Joyce.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Kevin Joyce. I'm the Cumberland County Sheriff. I apologize, normally I have a handout, but I made a last-minute diversion out here because my schedule freed up, so I came up to speak on this. Senator Hamper, Senator Rosen, Senator Rotondo, Representative, Representative, sorry. You've heard a lot about the law enforcement aspect. I do support that. I would suggest that the 10 agents are probably a drop in the budget, bucket, because of the fact that that makes only 42 cover in a big state of Maine. But I'm really not here to talk about the enforcement, because we've heard of all the law enforcement officers and enforcement. Kudos to NDA, who does the enforcement aspect. Kudos as well to Skygro, they're thinking outside the box on what could be. And that's what I want to talk about, is what could be. You know, I've had a lot of aha moments, and I had an aha moment about six months ago, when a person I knew came up to me and said, "I gotta confide that I'm a drug addict, and I'm trying to recover. I've got a family, he's never been arrested. He tries to hold up a job, and he goes to the methadone clinic, right, wrong, or indifferent every day." And I would never have guessed, because we all stereotype this back alley person with a needle in their arm, and not the addicts we see today. We've seen some people, some very strong people up here today, that you can walk right upon, and you would never think that they're addicted to any drugs. Last month, in October, WMTW TV came in and did a news story on five inmates from the Cumberland County Jail. I was going to use that I have the largest detox center and mental health hospital, but it was already used that, so I'm one of the largest. I would say that every jail is the largest for their particular county. And these five inmates that were interviewed, one of them was a felon. The others were in for misdemeanor. One individual was in because he got picked up because he failed to pay fine. He had a job, he had a family, he got, he had a debt to the courts, but he got picked up and he was serving one day for every, $5 a day for every day he spent in jail. And I'm listening, and I'm going, this guy is really, what he's got is a priority issue. He's working, he's buying drugs second, then he's trying to take care of his family, and then the court needs their pound of flesh. Others were in there for shoplifting, and they were there to support that addiction. And it was sad to hear that they felt safest when they were in the jail, which is a bad place to be, because we're not helping them. When we release them, the door opens, we cross our fingers, hope that they don't come back. And we've done nothing to curb that satiable appetite for that drug. One individual talked about meeting the love of his life. Now, I thought it was a woman, but unfortunately, it was heroin 15 years ago. We've got to figure out how we keep these people out of jail. Last term, we talked about the cost of jails and how expensive they are. Four people out of the five that were in here, if they were in a drug rehabilitation program, and I've heard the number thrown out of $80 a day versus the $112 that it costs me to lock them up and do absolutely nothing other than monitor their withdrawals, there's a savings right there. That's a non-stocker. We've heard about the supply and demand when it relates to the drug addict. I will tell you, there's always a bed at the Cumberland County Jail for drug traffickers, and the supply and demand there. How about if we look at the supply and the demand of the people using the drugs, and if we can rehabilitate them, then the supply from our state generally, although we have people inside, are not going to come to Maine, because it's not going to be profitable. People aren't going to buy, so they're not going to come up here. So, I do support this bill in both the law enforcement aspect, but we really have to focus on the root cause. And the root cause, as we've heard with most crimes, and I will testify to the same, is there is an nexus between the crime and trying to fulfill that drug habit. Lastly, we look at it as an illness. And I've heard people tell, you know what, they get what they deserve. They tried that drug one time, and they got what they deserved. Do we say that about somebody who uses sugar all the time, who's a diabetic? Do we say that about somebody who smoked for X number of years, and now they're, they've got cancer? No, we treat them. And in this particular case, they don't deserve it, they need treatment. Thank you.
And thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Ann Wallison.
Ann, I just want to announce that if there's anybody downstairs in the welcome center who's interested in testifying on parts A and B of LD 2599, would they please come up now and let us know, because we're just about at the end of the list, and we will then start the hearing on parts C and D. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for listening. Everyone here is definitely, everyone who's testifying. I am Ann Wallison. I am with Medical Justice Partners, and I am here today, I'm at the Medical Justice Partners in support of the proposal being presented today. We recognize and we commend the bipartisan effort that has gone into developing this proposal, and that by combining treatment, prevention, and recovery efforts with enforcement efforts, legislative leadership has shown that it is serious about working together to effectively address this issue. As you consider this proposal, however, we want to make sure that Maine policymakers are aware of a new coalition involving law enforcement and criminal justice leaders from every strip state in the country, including Maine, to improve public safety and reduce the number of people in prison. Law enforcement leaders to reduce crime and incarceration urges alternatives to policies within police departments and prosecutor's offices that divert people with mental health and drug addiction issues away from arrest, prosecution, and imprisonment, and instead into platform treatment. While detox beds and funds that help uninsured minors get treatment will help some, we know that ongoing access to comprehensive drug and mental health treatment is necessary, if not critical, if we are truly committed to prevention and recovery. As a member of Cover Maine Now, Maine Equal Justice urges you to continue working together to adopt policy that ensures access to effective ongoing treatment services that will help prevent and reduce addiction as well as incarceration and reentry into Maine's criminal justice system. We have a cost-effective way to deal with Maine's addictive crisis. As we struggle to address drug and alcohol problems, accepting federal funds available that have been set aside for our state would provide health coverage to poor, low-income, uninsured people, and it would be the most comprehensive way to provide drug treatment and mental health services to the population they are talking about today. There's money on the table right now, and the federal government is solving this problem. And if we adopted and accepted those federal funds, over $420 million would flow into our state next year that could be used to provide all the treatment services that we've talked about today. In states that have accepted the federal funds to withstand access to coverage, many state accounting correction departments have launched problems that incorporate enrolling people who are leaving the prison system into Medicaid. A recent study published in Health Affairs describes over 64 prisons across the country where county and state criminal justice programs are working with community probation, parole systems, to enroll individuals into Medicaid while they are contained, incarcerated, or about to be released. I've attached some study, I'm not going to go into it in detail, Medicaid expansion and criminal justice costs creates expansion studies and emerging practices, released by the Rubberwood Foundation last November, that shows how resources are being used through Medicaid expansion in other states to address the opiate addiction, the opiate epidemic and incarceration of people with severe mental illness to get more effectively treated in the community. The report describes savings to state criminal justice systems that are a direct result of expanding Medicaid by accepting the federal dollars due to reduce the incarceration rates as a result of community-based crisis services that are being used to treat people who are leaving the criminal justice system. I see that it looks like my time is up. Time goes by when you're trying to have fun. I just want to remind people, Ann policymakers and people sitting in the room, that a study was released last, last spring that showed that Maine's criminal justice system would save $5.4 million if we accepted federal funds, because those federal funds would pay for services that are currently...
Everybody thought pot, gateway drug, that's a bunch of garbage, it's an engine drug. Alcohol's a gateway drug. I never, I never got stoned, I'm gonna go shoot some dope. But when alcohol was involved, as soon as I got a little bit of drinking, I was off some reasons. Whatever we can do about, a lot of some money to help out. I mean, if you say it yourself, there's only sixteen beds in the whole state, why is there only sixteen beds in the whole state? Everybody's talking about more money for this, more money for that. How about putting some more money up, doing some rehab services? To get people clean, or something that works.
Thank you very much for being here. Jenna, now it's your turn.
Welcome. Thank you. So my name's Jenna Maynard, I'm the executive director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the Maine State Chapter. Oh, and she's gone, the person who wanted data. We will bring to the floor session information about mental illness and co-occurring substance use disorders. Substance use disorders is a mental illness, it's in the DSM. Before this role, I was the executive director of the New England Institute for Addiction Studies. So my position statement is largely related to the criminal justice side, there's just a tiny bit that connects to the funding for recovery centers. Obviously, I'm not going to read it for you, but just to point out, obviously, NAMI Maine supports additional access to outpatient and inpatient residential beds and recovery centers and the additional enforcement officers. Many of you know, we work very closely with law enforcement across the state. I was really proud, both when Sheriff Morton and when Chief Sachech spoke about how non-stigmatizing their language are. People aren't addicts, they have a substance use disorder, we don't label someone, that's a diabetes, that's a cancer, we shouldn't do that with mental illness either. So I was really proud to hear the non-stigmatizing language used by some of our law enforcement leaders. I wanna point out a few concerns we have, not just concerns as much as suggestions. And you'll see the last paragraph talks about LD-1488, which is a representative diablos bill, which would put more money, fifty thousand dollars, will do nothing for law enforcement to have low-level drug diversion. It's, that's ridiculous. Representative diablos bill cost for two million, I realize that's maybe too much. But we work very closely with the Sheriff's Association, very aware of the overcrowding in our jails, very aware of the fact that folks who have low-level drug crime arrests need treatment. And treatment sooner rather than treatment later will produce better outcomes. So the sooner we can intervene in someone's life, the better, first arrest, ideal, even before first arrest, obviously, the better. But so we would strongly advocate that we look at that fifty thousand dollars and be more realistic about what will actually make an impact, as Mark did in LD-1488. We also would just say, as we will say with everything that comes to mental health, that let's use an evidence-based model. There are national registry of evidence-based practices and programs that is maintained by the federal SAMSA. List programs that work and standards that need to be met. We have significant concern, money is always part of the solution when it comes to mental illness, especially with the lack of access in this state and the number of people who are uninsured when it comes to mental health coverage. But just doing something isn't as important as doing something that research shows works. Everybody thinks they've got the newest brilliant idea, and that's nice, but why are we wasting money to determine if something's effective when we know things that do work? So when we talk about the money of the ESAP, our concern would be that there'd be evidence-based requirements on those funds. We think funding is important, but funding with clear guidelines around meeting evidence-based standards is equally important. So, and obviously, we support the detox center, which is the point that I will end on, I'm gonna, you know, NAMI Maine works with lots of families and lots of individuals, so Mary and Jimmy, Mary passed away at seventy-two after lifelong struggle with alcoholism because her doctor, her Percocet wasn't working for her lower-baked back pain anymore, so he prescribed Oxy. The day after he prescribed Oxy, unaware of her substance use disorder, she passed away from an overdose of taking Oxy to treat her back pain with no intent to do so. Her husband, now, it's been about, about a year and a half, he continues to attempt to drink himself to death, because he too, as a Scottish immigrant, has been a lifelong alcoholic. There is no detox center in Bangor where he lives, so he continues to go to St. Joe's, who sober him up, arrives in an ambulance, sobered up, sent back home to do the same thing over and over again. So I realize that we talk a lot about addiction when we talk about young people, but as our outstanding veteran pointed out, we can't forget about all people and our scene of struggle, substance use disorders as well. And a detox center is greatly needed. And just our questions, so you can go.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, questions? Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Kevin, it looks like Joyce. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Kevin Joyce, I'm the Cumberland County Sheriff. I apologize, normally I have a handout, but I made a last-minute diversion on here because my schedule cleared up, so I came up to speak on this. Senator Hamper, Senator Rosen, Senator Rotondo, Representative, Representative, sorry. You've heard a lot about the law enforcement aspect. I do support that, I would suggest that the ten agents are probably dropping a bucket because of the fact that that makes only forty-two cover in a big state of Maine. But I'm really not here to talk about the enforcement, because we've heard of all the law enforcement officers and enforcement. Kudos to MDEA, who does the enforcement aspect, kudos as well to Scarborough, they're thinking outside the box on what could be. And that's what I wanna talk about, is what could be. You know, I've had a lot of aha moments, and I had an aha moment about six months ago, when a person I knew came up to me and said, "I gotta confide that I'm a drug addict, and I'm trying to recover, I've got a family, he's never been arrested, he tries to hold up a job, and he goes to the methadone clinic, right, wrong, or indifferent every day." And I would never have guessed, because we all stereotype this back alley person with a needle in their arm, and not the addicts we see today. We've seen some people, some very strong people up here today, that you can walk right upon, and you would never think that they're addicted to any drugs. Last month, in October, WMTWTV came in and did a news story on five inmates from Cumberland County Jail. I was gonna use that, I have the largest detox center and mental health hospital, but the authorities already use that, so I'm one of the largest. I would say that every jail is the largest for their particular county. And these five inmates that were interviewed, one of them was a felon, the others were in for misdemeanor. One individual was in because he got picked up because he failed to pay fine. He had a job, he had a family, he got, he had a debt to the court. But he got picked up and he was served a one-day, for every, five dollars a day, for every day he spent in the jail. And I'm listening, and I'm going, this guy is really, what he's got is a priority issue. He's working, he's buying drugs second, then he's trying to take care of his family, and then the court needs their pound of flesh. Others were in there for chocolate, and they were there to support that addiction. And it was sad to hear that they felt safest when they were in the jail, which is a bad place to be, because we're not helping them. When we release them, the door opens, we cross our fingers hoping they don't come back. We've done nothing to curb that satiable appetite for that drug. One individual talked about meeting the love of his life. Now, I thought it was a woman, but unfortunately, it was heroin fifteen years ago. We've got to figure out how we keep these people out of jail. Last term, we talked about the cost of jails and how expensive they are. Four people out of the five that were in here, if they were in a drug rehabilitation program, and I've heard the number thrown out of eighty dollars a day versus the hundred and twelve dollars that it costs me to lock them up and do absolutely nothing other than monitor their withdrawals, there's a savings right there, that's a nonstop. We've heard about the supply and demand when it relates to the drug addict. I will tell you, there's always a bed in Cumberland County Jail for drug traffickers and the supply and demand there. How about if we look at the supply and the demand of the people using the drugs? And if we can rehabilitate them, then the supply from our state generally, although we have people inside, are not gonna come to Maine, because there's not gonna be profit. People aren't gonna buy, so they're not gonna come up here. So I do support this bill in both the law enforcement aspect, but we really have to focus on the root cause. And the root cause, as we've heard with most crimes, and I will testify to the same, is there is an exit between the crime and trying to fill that drug habit. Lastly, we look at it as an illness, and I've heard people tell, you know what, they get what they deserve. They tried that drug one time and they got what they deserved. Do we say that about somebody who uses sugar all the time, who's a diabetic? Do we say that about somebody who smoked for X number of years and now they're, they've got cancer? No, we treat them. And in this particular case, they don't deserve it, they need treatment, thank you.
And thank you very much for being here, appreciate it. Ann Paulson. Ann, I just wanna announce that if there's anybody downstairs in the welcoming center who's interested in testifying on parts A and B of LD-2599, if they please come up now and let us know, because we're just about at the end of the list, and we will then start the hearing on parts C and D. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you all for listening, everyone here is standing, and thank you for everyone who's testifying. I am Ann Paulson, I am with Equal Justice Partners, and I am here today on the Equal Justice Partners in support of the proposal being forwarded today. We recognize and we commend the bipartisan effort that has gone into developing this proposal, and that by combining treatment, prevention, and recovery efforts with enforcement efforts, legislative leadership has shown that it's serious about working together to effectively address this issue. As you consider this proposal, however, we wanna make sure that Maine policymakers are aware of a new coalition involving law enforcement and criminal justice leaders from every strip state in the country, including Maine, to improve public safety and reduce the number of people in prison. Law enforcement leaders to reduce crime and incarceration urges alternatives to policies within police departments and prosecutor's offices that divert people with mental health and drug addiction issues away from arrest, prosecution, and imprisonment, and instead into proper treatment. While detox beds and funds that help uninsured minors get treatment will help some, we know that ongoing access to comprehensive drug and mental health treatment is necessary, if not critical, if we are truly committed to prevention and recovery. As a member of Cover Maine Now, Maine Equal Justice urges you to continue working together to adopt policy that ensures access to effective ongoing treatment services that will help prevent and reduce addiction as well as incarceration and reentering into Maine's criminal justice system. We have a cost-effective way to deal with Maine's addictive crisis. If we struggle to address drug and alcohol problems, accepting federal funds available that have been set aside for our state would provide health coverage to poor, low-income, uninsured people, and it would be the most comprehensive way to provide drug treatment and mental health services to the population they're talking about today. There's money on the table right now, and the federal government to solve this problem. And if we adopted and accepted those federal funds, over four-hundred-and-twenty million dollars would flow into our state next year that could be used to provide all the treatment services that we've talked about today. In states that have accepted the federal funds to expand access to coverage, many state accounting correction departments have launched problems that incorporate enrolling people who are leaving the prison system into Medicaid. A recent study published in Health Matters describes over sixty-four prisons across the country where county and state criminal justice programs are working with community probation, parole systems, to enroll individuals into Medicaid while they are contained, incarcerated, or about to be released. I've attached the study, I'm not gonna go into it in detail, Medicaid expansion and criminal justice costs creates expansion studies and emerging practices, released by the Rubberwood Foundation last November, that shows how resources are being used through Medicaid expansion in other states to address the opiate epidemic and incarceration in people with severe mental illness to be more effectively treated in the community. The report describes savings to state criminal justice systems that are a direct result of expanding Medicaid by accepting the federal dollars due to reduce the incarceration rates as a result of immediate release, deductions, and new reentrance to prison, and Medicaid-funded, community-based crisis services that are being used to treat people who are leaving the criminal justice system. I see that it looks like my time is up, time goes by when you're trying to have fun. I just wanna remind people and policymakers and people sitting in the room, that a study was released last, last spring that showed that Maine's criminal justice system would save five-point-four million dollars if we accepted federal funds, because those federal funds would pay for services that are currently being paid for with state money dollars. The state would also save over twenty million dollars in mental health services that are currently being provided by the state-funded, state-funded dollars, because people are using those state-funded dollars to qualify for Medicaid. I'm gonna stop there because I've exceeded my time, I'm just saying two other things, and that is the, the, I forget what the program's called in Scarborough, where there's a lot of state for detox, Jess. Pardon? Operation Hope. I went down, wonderful program, talking to the officers that are administering that program. Two-thirds of the people that are leaving the state to get detox services are uninsured, so they're coming back, they don't have access to ongoing treatment services because they don't have the insurance. The other thing I wanna mention is that estimates are that in Maine, over three-thousand Maine veterans are qualified for services that we accepted the federal funds, and another thousand family members of those veterans, that's a lot. That's out there, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. Any questions? Thank you very much for doing it. Bob Howe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of both committees, I'm Bob Howe, I'm the registered lobbyist and the main chief of the Police Association. I'm also the father of a recovering substance abuser. Fortunately, my daughter has done very well for the last twenty years. But it took two stints for rehab, a lot of determination, a lot of counseling, before she, keeps her habit, she still works at it. And some of the news accounts recently have heard, it said that treatment may not work because people relax. And my daughter relaxed once, but the second time made a difference. It's become a cliche to say that we can't unravel our way out of the problem, and I think the chiefs and sheriffs who work for me made it clear that they understand that, we need to go after both the supply and the demand. You heard from Officer Gill, whose mother, by the way, President Barton and I served with nearly forty years ago. Barbara Gill, some of you may know Barton, remember her? I had the pleasure to have dinner with a group of people recently, one of them is Ellie, who is an angel, volunteer angel with Scarborough's Operation Hope. And she told me what she does as a volunteer, she may get called any hour of the day and night if somebody presents themselves to the Scarborough Police Department. And she starts working the list, she has to try to find a band in some other state. And it's difficult, it takes a lot of calls, sometimes she's successful, sometimes she doesn't. Sometimes she has to rely on some organization in Pennsylvania, for example, who's willing to provide a band with no compensation, no financial resource for the person to be helped. So if we do nothing more than create more in Operation Hope, we're gonna have the problem. We have a lot of police departments around the state competing for the same, for the same state. So I mean, that needs to be only a piece of the solution. So House Cop there with my remarks, I signed up for this afternoon for the Mainers Practition Association, I won't speak, I'll certainly submit their statement. Thank you, and I'm glad you're trying to ask your question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall, for being here, sharing your story, any questions? Thank you. Robert? And I'm sorry, I should remember your last name, but I don't.
Bledsoe, like Bledsoe, the quarterback. No, he never won a championship for the Winnetka Patriots.
Thank you, I just had a hard time.
Think I'm about to change my last name to Brady, in recognition.
Have a hard time reading your name, sorry.
Well, thank you. My name is Bobby Bledsoe, and I reside in Bangor, Maine. And I currently, we currently, I'm the CEO and founder of City Reach Bangor. We run recovery programs in Bangor that are faith-based. And one thing I can say unequivocally without any reservation is that what we are not facing is not a drug problem all in itself, we are facing a heart problem. We are facing a hope problem. Many people, you know, decide to, you know, medicate themselves with drugs, whether they are natural or pharmaceutical, because many people don't have hope. And today, we are currently in the beginning stages, we've actually are buying a, the old YNCA building in Bangor, Maine, and we've actually been renting it for a year. We just had a major donor donate three-hundred thousand dollars to a one-point-seven-million-dollar building that we're buying. We currently have twenty-six men and women enrolled in our program in Bangor. I brought a few of them, could, you guys stand up, these men and women that are, this is just a few of them that we could fit in the vehicle to come down today. But we are seeing a tremendous turnaround rate, eighty-six percent turnaround rate statistically in the two years we've been here. In the nine months, we've seen men and women be completely delivered of drug addiction and alcoholism. And the reason I'm so invested into this is, I myself once was an addict, and you'll notice my, the way I do say that I'm not a recovering addict, I am a, I'm no longer an addict, I've been set free, and the chains of addiction have fallen off, and I've been clean for eleven years. And my desire is to see many men and women change that same way. Eleven years ago, I was a heroin addict, and a crack cocaine addict. And sorry to say, marijuana's not gonna change a heroin addict, because that was my first intro into heroin, was marijuana. I don't believe suboxone or any other medicated decision to get somebody off of drugs is gonna get them off the drugs. You can't replace one addiction for another, you just can't. In our program, we not only take men and women off the streets, and every single one of them really have literally come off the streets, but in our, in our program, we actually teach them a trade, so after nine months, you're learning a trade, whether it's being a contractor, whether it's with some of the...